Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
At 10:15 this morning, Marilyn Jacobic, Director of Board of Elections, will be here to update the board on the voting requirement. Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Paying Services Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I ask that the one be held, because we're going to reduce that one. Aye. Oh, did you take the vote?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
But that one exception to be held.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, approve an enter into agreement between John L. Goodman, Attorney-at-Law, Robert E. Sweeney Company, LPA, for Lorraine County workers' compensation issues, effective September 15, 2003, expiring September 15, 2005, at a cost of $1,250 per month, with a 30-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Except alternative number four on bid package 7A, roofing and metal panels for Lorraine County Justice Center, and modify Fairweather Roofing's contract to reflect the acceptance of said alternate in the amount of $4,650. This exterior sheet metal was not included in the original award for bid package 7A, but the special paint finish was accepted on all other applicable bid packages in the initial awards, and the slate acceptance is necessary to obtain a correct match for the aluminum finishes, and will provide greater resistance to corrosion and fade. This alternative will not affect the original bid position or award.
Chairman, did you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Commissioner. Briefly, this is not a change order. This was an alternative selection that we overlooked in awarding the massive amount of bid packages that we did when we first issued all the primes. The coping is what we're looking at here, so that the color of that coping along some of the windows and the roof edge matched the windows, and we have uniformality in the coloring. So I just want to assure you that this doesn't constitute a change, it's just that we should have selected this alternative when we awarded the bids.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste Management District, approved the grant guidelines that were revised and improved by the Policy Committee with the stipulation that up to $250,000 of additional funds could be given out above the allotted amount for communities that request more than they are supposed to receive under new grant formulas for the year 2004 from account 20201-5302-490802, recycle grants.
Man, Chair, I believe Mr. Cordes had some suggestions about this. I haven't had time to review this in depth. You sent a letter, maybe it wasn't, in regard to this.
If this is the recycling grants, and I think there was some procedural guidelines forwarded from the Solid Waste Department that I reviewed yesterday, my recommendations were that we go to a draw system rather than a cash system. Right now, we're giving 40% of the grant allocation after the award's made, and I believe a 40% the next quarter after that. The numbers aren't concrete. I'd like to see us go to a system like the state has where they actually do the work, and then they do a draw on us, and we pay them. I'm not comfortable advancing the money before any progress is made. There's a couple of issues why, but it's not in our best interest to do that. And I think the other suggestion I had had to do with requesting for changes in their grant, I thought that September 1 really was very, very late in the year. By the time we got it processed and got it back to them, there really was no time to say, you know, really yea or nay in any change. I thought that by April 1, that they should have ample time to know whether they're going to be able to comply with what they've requested in their grant. After April 1, I thought that we should not allow any additional changes to their grant request. But those were just some ideas that I had after reviewing it.
That's a good idea, Jim. Are you talking about just $250,000 on the draw?
The, I was talking about the entire contract for all the recycle grants. I had a bit of discussion with Dan on that previously, and I believe that it may be new to the board, because your letter just came over a day or two ago, right, on that issue? Your letter only came over a day or two ago, talking to this issue to the board? So you may not have even been able to review it yet. I just, I was lucky yesterday, I got to my inbox from my old box, and I jotted some notes to it pretty quickly, so that's what Commissioner Blair was referencing.
Okay. I would move to approve this with the clause that this money be appropriated upon completion of the work, as however you would award it on the draw.
Dan, do you want to speak to that? Dan has a little bit of a difference of agreement for a good reason, so maybe we should give him a chance. Sorry, Commissioner.
Dan, I have to ask you this, please. Our cameraman has requested that everyone give their name and spell their last name. We haven't been doing this for a while, and they're a little bit concerned.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dan Dillman, B-I-L-L-M-A-N, County Solid Waste Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Jim and I have discussed this, possible modification of how we distribute funds. At this time, what problem I have is that some of the entities we're dealing with, with the townships, and possibly some cities, would not be able to fund these things without getting the funds from us first. In other words, they give us the proposals at this time, okay? And then after, we divvy out the funds in a quarterly manner. So the last funding would be before our fiscal year ends in December. And I've heard a couple of people say that they wouldn't be able to operate unless they had our funds up front. And that's where Jim and I have been talking about changing the way we divvy out the funds. But I believe firmly that some of the entities would not be able to operate without us first funding the project, okay?
Well, if they have a good reason, couldn't we make an exception on the basis as they come in?
Well, that could be, but it would, it will definitely greatly increase our paperwork in the office to do that.
Without giving specifics, we've had some of our grant recipients actually receive a few quarters of our dollars and not even start in their projects until the end of the year, so I just wonder what they're doing with the money.
Yeah, it's a matter of interest, too. Who's getting the interest? The general fund, the solid waste fund, or the community?
Not us if the funds are gone.
Right.
I don't want to name anything here, but that has occurred, correct?
Yes, I totally agree with what Jim's saying. Possibly there's a better way of doing it. I think at this late date, we probably shouldn't do that. I think we should continue on what we're doing this year, and we'll work up a better means of distributing the money for next year, which would be 2005, not 2004. We're dealing with 2004 right now.
Yeah, but we're talking about $250,000, too.
Actually, Commissioner, I think you're talking about 1.2 million.
Well, in this case, with this resolution, we're talking about, oh, okay.
So it's about 1.2?
This is the whole program.
Right, the whole number.
But you have given out some of that other money already, haven't you? The million?
No.
You haven't given any of it out?
This is a, the grant structure for this coming next year, 2004.
Yes, I see.
So what are you doing, adding 250 to the 1.2?
I think it was like 960,000, 40,000 plus 250, right?
The proposal that's before you today is 1.2 plus...
250.
250, okay. Next year, it will revert back to the 1.2.
Now, what do you mean by "next year"?
2005.
And would you like to just expand a little bit, if you don't mind, Man, Chair, on why the Policy Committee is recommending an additional $250,000 to these communities?
Because of the late date, that they figured that it was advisable to give that portion up, because we normally, the old plan had $940,000 in the plan for distributing to the different communities. This new plan is 1.2 million, okay? So it is definitely an increase. But what's been happening is that we've been constantly giving out 1.3, 1.4, and 1.5 million in some years to these communities, and the Policy Committee figured that they better bring it back into the realm of the plan, which is 1.2. But because of the late date, and other, and some communities and townships already have been planning, and it would possibly give them, bring them a hardship this year. So we do have the funding to do it, but the plan says 1.2, and they're willing, the Policy Committee said that they're willing to let this year, 2004, be in excess of the 1.2 million.
Well, but this is, what, August, September? What kind of plans could anybody have had? They didn't know that this money might be available, did they?
If I understand the question correctly, you're asking me that, or...
About the additional $250,000. You mentioned communities' planning, and I'm asking you, what kind of plans would they have had for money that they didn't even know might be available?
Because of what we've been giving them in the past years, which has been in excess of...
Okay.
...the amount that we are approved to give out.
I see. In other words, they deem this to be an entitlement?
Well, I guess that's what you want to say, and that's the problem with this program that we have, is become, first, as I understand it, what was first put into being way back when, before my time, it was like an incentive to recycle for the different communities. It has turned into an entitlement situation, where they expect it every year, every year. Within the new plan, and this, and what we're doing here, with the grant guidelines and requirements, there is actually an incentive built into the grant guidelines this year, so they can expend up to $5,000 max, minimum is $1,000, for incentives for their constituents to recycle. We're not setting any guidelines as how they use the money. Could be for possible gift certificates to a restaurant, could be recognition in other forms, paper form, certificates, whatever, but we're leaving that up to the communities to decide. We'd like to see them be very innovative in that. So that is going to be an incentive program that's in the plan and in these guidelines for this next coming year, this 2004. But you're right, Commissioner, that it has just developed into an entitlement, and everybody figures that they're, that's what they're going to get every year.
Are there any other questions?
So we have two issues then?
Excuse me?
We're voting on two issues, it sounds like? Changing the date, increasing funding, a third issue, too, and how you get that funding?
The Commissioners, my, in doing my due diligence reviewing, and I just made some recommendations, you don't necessarily need to vote on them or change this, they were just suggestions for improving overall accountability. Those have been what has some problems.
But we have an agenda item right now. What are we voting on?
Well, I moved to approve this and then modify the distribution. Why don't we review this a little bit more in depth and take action next week? It doesn't have to be approved, and according to his letter, he asked that these guidelines be placed on board business no later than September 11. September 11 is our next meeting date. I would just ask that we hold it. I'd like to become a little bit more familiar with what I'm, and I haven't read the whole package.
I don't know if you're going to do something, put it all, you want it all in one, or would you rather do separate?
Yes.
Well, I think you are approving the additional funding, and you are approving, from what I'm reading here, the grant formula.
Okay, you're also talking about changing the...
The way the money's distributed.
Yeah. Well, not in this resolution, those are only in my, only in my letters.
Well, maybe we ought to be looking at that.
Okay.
If we're going to have an all-encompassing issue, I would suggest that we do, together, whatever it's going to be.
Yeah, because my motion included that, so I withdraw my motion, and we'll ask to have this held for a week.
Thank you, Man, Chair. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Under the Prosecutor, Number 13, support and endorse Senate Bill 1091 and House HR 218, Prosecutors and Defenders Act, which would grant student loan forgiveness to attorneys who agree to remain employed as prosecutor or public defender for a period of service not less than three years, and urge Congress to enact this legislation as soon as possible to begin providing relief for attorneys who choose a career in the public service.
Jerry, you want to speak to this? I mean, it says prosecutor, so I guess that's your department.
I'm not completely familiar with it. It's my understanding that there is a federal program that is in place that encourages attorneys to become employed with the federal government, and there's now proposed legislation to provide some incentive for attorneys to get involved in the public sector on both the state and local level. And Mr. Manning would like the support of the Commissioners, so that we can encourage attorneys to become involved in the public sector. It's not just for prosecutors, it's for a public defender also.
I believe there was a sample resolution.
I can certainly indicate to Mr. Manning, if you'd like, if you'd like him to provide more information.
A sample resolution that came from another county.
Right.
So apparently, they've experienced some need to be proactive.
I feel like this is showing partiality to attorneys. I mean, a lot of kids out there have student loans and have to work hard to pay for them. Why should attorneys get off free? They're the ones that are going to make most of the money in the first place. I'm sorry. That's the way I feel about it, so I just, I'm telling you upfront, can't support it. No offense, attorneys.
I'm not, so we're okay then, I guess it is.
You're not what, not supporting it?
Yeah, no offense taken too far.
I guess, Commissioner, I've seen some of our architect bills, and I respectfully disagree.
Hey, well, we'd never support architects either.
There are a few other fields that we could include in there, but right now, we're talking about...
Sounds really good.
Okay. We're all in agreement?
No, I just had two people, and I guess that's all you need, right, Ben?
I think so. Two's majority, however you twist it.
Number 14.
Moving on.
Under the Sheriff, Number 14, approve an enter to a one-year renewal maintenance agreement with Intex Live Scan Fingerprinting System for Lorraine County Sheriff, effective November 1, 2003, expiring October 31, 2004, at a cost of $7,142.69 to be paid from account 15102-2301. County Sheriff Award 2003, LBBX 1656, in the amount of $9,109, with county match a 10% in the amount of $1,012 to be paid from the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Trust Fund. These funds must be accepted online or before October 13, 2003.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve an enter into a contract with Star Architectural Group, LTD, Amherst, Ohio, to perform architectural services for Lorraine County Sheriff's Office Storage Building in the amount of $18,000, which includes building permit fees and reimbursable expenses to be paid from account 15102-2301-450124, professional services.
Commissioners, if I may, we need to expand that resolution a little bit. Due to the good work in our budget department, they were verifying funds in various accounts before it came here, and in the haste to continue to move projects forward, it was overlooked that there's not enough appropriation in this account to cover the $18,000. There is enough funding, we just need to appropriate additional money within the account. So I would therefore ask that you add, action taken today also approves appropriation of unappropriated monies in said account, number 15102-2301-450124, professional services, for $18,000.
So we actually have to approve another appropriation for $18,000? There was no money in there at all?
There's not enough money to cover this account here, and the $18,000 was recommended by the Budget Department, and to their credit, they caught this before we passed the resolution on it.
So that'll give us some additional?
There is cash, Mr. Cordes has said, it just needs to be appropriated, which means setting it aside. So there is... No additional funding is coming from the general fund regardless. Correct.
Okay.
I'll pass this up if you want to.
I will move and include that we approve an additional appropriation of $18,000, John?
Yes.
$18,000 to account number that's on here. I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Do we want to say an additional $18,000?
It'll just say appropriate, in a, I read it as a record.
There's something in there now.
The way we said that...
Approve appropriation of unappropriated monies...
To cover the appropriation.
For $18,000.
Now, we just passed a motion, it's going to say an additional 18. If there's only, if there's, is there 15 in it right now? We're going to put 18 in it?
It's just an appropriation of unappropriation. That would be sufficient, Commissioner. I can't, I don't want to concur in it, and then we do it.
No, the way it was, it wasn't the same.
Yeah, because I'm figuring there's got to be some money in there.
There's ample cash, it's just a simple idea.
No, no, you're confusing it.
Appropriation of money, setting it aside. One second, Commissioners, the...
We're just going to move $18,000 into that account.
Right. This is a...
Bottom line.
This is an interesting project, by the way, because we're going to be using prison labor to put up this building. So it should be a very interesting project, and it should be very cost-effective, and the jail is being very innovative in how they're doing this.
Yeah, but I heard the unions weren't real happy with that either. Should straighten that out.
Well, we've spoken with the trades, and they understand what we're doing, and while they clearly like working, as everybody does, they also understand the need to enter into some of these agreements and do the best we can with the tax payers' dollars. So they're watching, interesting, as an interested party like we are, how this unfolds.
It's good, keeps the inmates busy, too, so that they don't have to just sit there.
A lot of the jail folks for, you know, thinking this, trying to close us off, be nice.
Mr. Cordes, any mystery?
I have no reports.
Mr. Innis?
Elizabeth Rumics, R-U-M-I-C-S, Oberlin, I may have missed something, but was number 16 voted on?
Yes.
I just completely missed the vote in the discussion that went back and forth.
I messed up, I started talking out of turn, and that's what happened.
While I'm at this microphone, may I suggest, particularly when the water fountain, or whatever it is, motor goes on, that both Mr. Cordes and Mr. Innis speak up more loudly?
In all my years, I've never been accused of not speaking loudly, but I will, I will speak louder, thank you.
You are a little bit quiet today.
Mr. Innis?
I have several issues for the Commissioners. First of all, as you're aware, last week, the Commissioners passed a resolution regarding Lorraine County Transit, providing for the transfer to the county to become the governing authority for the transit system. Subsequent to that meeting, I had cause to reexamine what occurred on that day, and if I may summarize it briefly. The Commissioners went into executive session to discuss some personnel issues which were discussed. In the course of that meeting, some real estate issues which are also appropriate for executive sessions also were discussed. I think comments that were made during that discussion were that there were several problems with the progress on some real estate issues, and that there just, progress was not being made, and it seemed...
Train, please, would you be specific, the train depot?
Okay, the train depot.
Thank you.
And there was some concern expressed that that was the result of a lack of coordination in both the approach and objectives between this board and the Transit Board. That in turn elicited a comment that perhaps that lack of coordination could be resolved by the county Commissioners taking over the transit itself. It was very clear that the Commissioners had done a lot of thinking about this prior to the meeting. For many, many months, there was not an extensive discussion regarding this. In fact, it appeared that the Commissioners just immediately came to their own conclusion that this was the thing to do, and I was instructed to find the appropriate code section and prepare the language for a resolution. Although I indicated, obviously, the Commissioners had thought about this for a long time, what occurred in the meeting happened very, very quickly, and quite frankly, faster than I could consider whether what we were doing was appropriate or not. Subsequent to that, I've now reviewed it. Even though what we said back there was very, very brief, that doesn't really matter. Commenting on the transfer of the transit in an executive session is not an appropriate comment to make. I therefore would recommend to the Commissioners that you rescind the motion that was made And that's Resolution 03640. Normally, when this type of thing happens, I would recommend to a body that they verbalize in the context of a public meeting their thoughts regarding the issue. Quite frankly, I probably talked longer about it today than what was said in the executive session regarding the topic. However, I would suggest that if you wish to readdress that issue and repass it, that whatever discussion you have regarding that be done in the public meeting.
Okay, then I'll move to rescind 03640, even though I disagree.
I disagree, too, because I don't believe we...
But let's get it over with.
Yeah. I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
What else, Jerry?
Do we want to give some comments on why we decided to do this?
No, I think... You've rescinded the other motion, now if you wish to retake that action, you have to make a new motion.
Okay. Then I would move to transfer the transit...
Let me read what you did last week, and then...
Go from here.
Last week, it was, be it resolved by the Board of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, that we hereby transfer the Lorraine County Transit System governing authority to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section
So we can move on that same...
You could like to renew that. You could, like, to renew that motion, you could renew that motion now.
Okay, then I would move to renew the motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? Aye.
And the reason I'm voting to transfer, uh, the transit is so that I feel that we can ensure the public of the, um, transit survival, and not only that, but when Jim and some of our other staff members went to Chicago, there was a lot of, um, problems out there with getting the funding. We thought that the, uh, grant was, uh, applied for, and apparently it hadn't been, and that building, the, the train depot, has been vacant for how many years now?
Two or three.
Hmm, probably about, yeah, three or four years. And I think it's time that we move on it, and we cannot do it unless we are, um, what do you call it, what did they call it, Jim? We have to be, help me out.
Uh, Commissioners, with respect to the building, I, I think my original discussion with the individual board members was that, uh, in order to use the building as a match, we should transfer the, the ownership to, to the transit folks, and let them use as a match on the grant, uh, to move the progress ahead, so we could apply for the earmark, 'cause if we have an earmark, we don't have a grant. We need to apply for the money, and we hadn't done so yet.
The transit hadn't done so?
Well, right.
The Transit Board.
Right, we could, we needed to either provide a cash match, or we needed to, uh, transfer the building to them so they could use it as a match, and those options were discussed with the board, and the board felt that they wanted to remain, maintain control of those issues.
But if, if we, if we didn't, in other words, the owner, the, the grant follows the owner?
My understanding is that the grant follows the owner, and...
Okay, and being that, that it would be the transit, they would have to move forward to, to apply for the grant, this hasn't been done yet, it hasn't been put on the, no wacka tip list, so there's several issues here that I feel that the Commissioners can handle, um, faster, and, um, maybe with more staff, that we have more staff, that we could do this in a, in a better manner, in a faster manner, and it would better serve the public. The Federal Transportation Agency won't discuss funding with us because the funding, the funds are going to go to the transit, correct?
Right, Mr. Twining can speak better than that, 'cause he's been trying to access information on that. I'm sorry, Ron, but you, you know, you may need to, uh, speak to, you've been trying to work with those folks.
Anyway, the bottom line is to better serve the public and to keep the transit going.
What has been reported, uh, Ron Twining, Community Development Director, T-W-I-N-I-N-G...
Thanks, Ron.
Um, what has been discussed over the last at least four months is that the recipient of the, uh, transit grant, whether it's the, the million-dollar earmark or any other opportunities that we have available, the discussion with the State of Ohio and with the FDA will be conducted with the recipient of the funds, and in this case, it is the County Transit Board and their employees. It has been difficult for us on this particular capital improvement project to get the answers so that we might assist the Transit Board, because we're not the recipient, and we've not been able to, uh, break down that chain of command, so to speak, and, and have dialogue to the level we need in order to, to help the Transit folks, um, apply for this capital improvement project. So that's what we found out when we were in Chicago and, and various meetings that we've had with the State of Ohio.
Okay, I appreciate that. Good explanation, since, since you were there, that was good. Okay. Ms. Renes, do you have anything further?
Um, secondly, uh, with respect to the action we took regarding the local government allocation formula, uh, I've had further contact with the other parties involved, um, with that matter. Attorney Goddard and Attorney Callender are here today. Since we have already been publicly informed that we're going to be sued regarding this matter, it would be appropriate to discuss this further, uh, in executive session, but, um, we're being asked to reconsider the time limit that we put on that. Um, and, uh, again, we could, we can do that in executive session, or we could proceed here if you wish, uh, but we need, do need to take another look at that.
What's the desire of the board?
I have no desire to go into executive session. I think any discussion we have should be public.
Okay.
Do they wanna change the, oh, 2010 to 2012?
Right, as, as you will recall, um, there was some discussion, and there was some concern regarding the limitations that we had placed on there. We put a limit, uh, that this go only to 2010. Uh, it is my understanding that the other legislative authorities do not wish to make that change, and they consider that that would be a substantive change to the formula, and are asking us to, uh, rescind that motion, uh, and adopt the formula as is. I think at the last meeting, I described to the Commissioners the changes that were made from our original proposal, uh, that I do have some concerns that those will raise matters of litigation. Nevertheless, as opposed to not allowing the thing to go into the state formula, uh, I think this is a better alternative. Attorney Goddard is here, Rick, would you like to make some comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Goddard is my name, that's G-O-D-D-A-R-D, um, and, uh, thank you, Jerry, for the, uh, the introduction. I am representing with, uh, Ryan Callender, uh, 23 of the municipalities and townships of Lorraine County, uh, in the appeal that was brought by the City of Lorraine. Uh, this has been, as the Commissioners know, a long, drawn-out process in which, uh, Mr. Cordes and the Commissioners have shown a tremendous amount of leadership here. We have, uh, dealt with a formula by which local government funds and revenue assistance funds have been distributed, uh, throughout the county, uh, for the last 20 years, uh, and we have used a, a formula which everyone thought was in place, uh, and was being administered, uh, which obviously has not accounted for changes in demographics, in population, in road mileage, or any of the other, uh, factors that would bear on the reallocation of this money. Uh, there have been some technical problems with the administration of the formula which we thought was in place, and that resulted in the appeal brought by the City of Lorraine. Uh, Mr. Cordes, on behalf of the Commissioners, has negotiated with the City of Lorraine to try to work out a, an agreeable reallocation pursuant to a new formula. Uh, the county Commissioners have agreed to shoulder a, a portion of the burden for the reallocation of the money. The City of Lorraine has compromised significantly from its position, and each of the communities within the county has been asked to shoulder a portion of that bur, of that burden. Uh, we have had, I believe, 26 of the communities, um, other than Lorraine, vote on this proposal. 23 of the 26 communities that have voted, uh, have approved the alternate formula, uh, and the indications that we have from the remaining communities that it will be approved by the remaining communities. Um, there have been just three communities that have voted against it, the City of Lorraine has passed it. And the reason why we believe that there should be no time limitation on the new alternative formula is the alternative formula that has been negotiated by, uh, Mr. Cordes on behalf of the Commissioners and the City of Lorraine, and approved by all of these communities, is that it gives us a, um, an easily administered method for distributing funds that we can change by agreement at any time. There is no timeframe for it. A year from now, the communities can come together in the same way that we have done here and decide to make changes. Five years from now, 10 years from now, anytime that this money continues to come to the county, we can come in and show the same level of leadership and responsibility to make changes to account for, uh, any change in the demographics and population and economic situations without having a gun to our heads of going back to the statutory formula. There are only three counties in the entire state that try to follow the statutory formula. It has been the source of endless litigation, and we suggest it's a waste of everyone's time and resources. We have a, a system here that's reflected in this new alternate formula that, uh, the Commissioners have already approved, although with a, a time limitation, which is easy to administer, which, which requires no recalculation, it's simply a mathematical formula, that virtually all of the communities in these counties have approved, and they find acceptable. We can alter that at any time by agreement, and the statute provides for that procedure. So we, we agree with the recommendation that this time...